The most specific comments I heard were from Commissioner Inman. So I'm going to call on him for a motion regarding map 11 with some of the words he just used and we can proceed from there. Commissioners, I want to be clear, though. I think what we're going to end up with are two motions. One tasking map 11 for further refinement and adjustment. And one doing the same for map 10. So if you have. Issues related to map 11. The motion we're about to take up would be the place to take them up. And I would urge you to consider whether the discussion will be best placed on map 11 or map 10. Now, I can't guarantee. That both maps will move forward. That, of course, is a decision for the commission. But if, for instance, we approved something with map 11. You were holding a comment back from map 10, but map 10 did not advance. I will provide an opportunity to add something more to map 11 if need. So with that. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, can it wait for Commissioner Inman to make the motion? Okay, good. Commissioner Inman, please.
Okay. Bring up my word documents.
While he's doing that, Marguerite, did you want to add something?
Uh, no, I just took it off mute so I could answer more quickly because we're getting late. No, I didn't want to add anything.
Okay, so my motion is. Starting with draft map 11. And I'm gonna change my language a little bit. Instead of using the 78 corridor, I'm gonna use. Um, county planning districts, which gets you the same solution, but respect. Uh, the planning district boundaries. So. Uh, add north mountain. Comma. Desert. Comma. Borrego Springs. County Planning Districts. To. District. Uh, three. What is District Three? From. District. Five. And then I have similar. Sub bullets. For several other planning districts in the south. So next, uh, next line would be Crest. In D3, that is only partly in D3 at present, so Crest to D3. Next one. Hamul. To D3. Next. Lakeside to D3. Ramona. To D3. And that's it. So these, these other additions. Are, um, not taking some of the unincorporated areas, for example, around Ramona. And, uh, El Cajon, that's the lakeside part of it, as well as the crest part of it. And incorporating them, uh, into D3. That's my motion.
Aren't they already in D3?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is first take the second. Then I'll ask Commissioner Inman to walk through it in a little more detail. Then we'll have discussion. Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Russ, thank you. Um, Commissioner Inman, do you want to just briefly highlight what the changes mean? Per the discussion we've had earlier.
So, for example, Lakeside Planning District. Most of it is in D3, but there are some slivers. That the Panama takes into. Uh, its district. So this is to move those unincorporated areas. And leave, uh, the intention is to leave more of the boundaries of the incorporated city of El Cajon. And remove the unincorporated areas and move them into D3. Same for Hamul and Crest Planning Districts.
And Commissioner Inman, let me just clarify, particularly with Crest. The unincorporated area you're talking about is just outside El Cajon City Municipal Boundaries?
Correct.
And obviously commissioners will be walking through this in more detail should the motion pass. Uh, and flow does some more intensive look. Commissioner Inman, that will complete your comments, correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so Co-Vice Chair Garcia and then Commissioner Larson, did you want the floor or is that an old hand? Very good. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
Thank you. Um, and, and thank you, Commissioner Inman, for those. Uh, suggested changes. I, I don't know if this is the time for me to, um. Way in because what I'd like to say is that, um. The first. Set of changes that Commissioner Inman refers to, North Mountain Desert, Borrego Springs. Um, I think are not consistent with the spirit of map 11, and I would not support those. But I have, uh, but I, I do agree with the other, um. Uh, suggestions that he's making, and I have some other, um. Potential, um, ways to look at this map that I think might improve it. So I don't know if it's another motion. Or how, what the process is, Chair.
I would prefer. Um. To, both for simplicity sake and to keep us in a common direction. That you explore those and see if we can work them in as friendly amendments. So you can go ahead and propose them now. I'll ask staff to type them up. And then I'll turn first to Commissioner Inman and Commissioner Russ to see if they're acceptable.
So. My friendly amendment would be to, um, delete. That first part that I just mentioned, the add North Mountain Desert Borrego Springs. And. I, I'd like to. Suggest that we look at. Uh, in D1. Um, move further west and potentially. Um. In the western area that's currently D4, go a little north. To capture some additional population into. D1 and take it away from. D4. And what I'm. What I'm trying to do here is, um, the goal here is to try and. Address D4. The C VAP. Um, if you will, imbalance. And also to be a little bit more responsive, maybe to try and capture a bit more, um. Of the Asian American population. In. D4 that we see in map, draft map 10. So. I, I mean, I have some more ideas, but. Maybe hopefully this gives enough direction to flow for what? The kind of, um, amendments. Uh, I'm trying to accomplish, um, with draft map 11.
Let me give Commissioner Inman, Commissioners Inman and Russ a chance to review.
Well, uh, I would not accept that as a friendly amendment.
But let's leave that up for now, though. Um, understood. And, uh, Commissioner Russ, I won't bother you because it takes both. Um.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
Anytime. Now, it. It, it, we have a choice we can make here under rules. Um. We could move to the amendment as a motion. Of itself and discuss that. Uh, we could also accept further changes. Um, which I'm inclined to ask for that first, so we have the complete package before us. Uh, and then see. Before I finish that, um. I just want to check. That, no, it's better done that way. Okay, so, um. Let me ask first, are there additional amendments to propose? Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Serbin.
Yes, this is a minor friendly amendment. I hope it's a friendly amendment to include Santa Isabel Reservation. Uh, move that from. District five to, to, um, the District Three in map 11. The reason why is because Julian. Is such in close proximity to that. Um, and I know that there's a shared commerce highway and. Perhaps. It could be. Contained within the same koi, but.
Runs between.
Um, this, uh, my, uh, my motion as stated above does do that.
Yeah. So it does.
So it does do that. Yes, it captures everything north of Santa Isabel and moves it into D3.
But it captures everything north of it. It essentially splits. D5. Is what you're proposed.
It does split D5, that is correct, yes.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
So that's a friendly amendment to my.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I want to avoid. Um. Because again, nothing's agreed till everything's agreed. This is a draft map. So, um. It is perfectly permissible to vote no on that. Um, if the motion still passes, we'll have an opportunity to discuss it. But I also want to keep collecting the amendments to make sure we know what we're talking about. So before I take any other comments. Commissioner Inman, what would be? Um. The, the boundary roughly on, on the map of what's being moved into D3.
It would be slightly east of the 79. So instead of using the 79 per se as the line. Which was what we did in live scenario modeling. It would be slightly east.
Commissioners, do we need to bring that up or is that well understood? It's well understood. Okay, very good. So.
Uh, no, wait a minute. Wait, I, I said that incorrectly. Slightly west. Of the 79.
Right, right, right.
I don't think it's well understood.
Okay, let's go ahead. Um, we captured that one, correct, John?
It, if, if John isn't on, I believe that I, um, captured it on my screen if, if folks would like to see that.
Could you bring that up?
Yep. So thi- this area. Um, this was what we did in live modeling here. This area captures, uh, the remaining of, um. Of all three of those county planning areas. So it's just this area here, and we're just taking the census blocks that have their centroid. Inside. Um. The, uh, county planning areas. So the highlighted blocks would move to. Um, District Three and. Um, this portion of the motion.
Yeah, and we have this as. The, um, I think I have this motion that with the community planning areas as the. Um, as the boundary to use to move these blocks over. So I think that. I think we, we have it. I, I think we have it clearly.
Commissioners, is that clear enough now? Good. All right, so with that. Um. And the understanding that will, for right now, I'd like to focus on amendments, additional amendments, so we have the entire shopping list. And if we can bring the. Motion screen back up, thank you. I have Commissioner Serbin, Commissioner Pons, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, Commissioner Serbin.
Thank you, Chair Baim. And so if the amendments we're proposing are amendments that are based on what we'd like to see changed to this map. Then I would like to again raise my deep concern about the central portion of San Diego, as Chair Baim also mentioned in his comments. The idea that. Portions of Sorrento Valley and Miramesa and Penasquitas and. Um. And, and parts of this, the 56 corridor will be, um. United with. Mountain Laguna, Hakumba Boulevard, Campo Potero, that's, that, 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 that doesn't bode well for, for that area. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to see if we can. Move that from District Three to District Two. So move from District Three to District Two, the area bounded by. Uh, this looks like the 56 on the south. The, um. 15 on the east. And the, um, the 56 corridor area. So that would be, um, Rancho Penasquitas and Miramesa.
Sorry, 56 on the south, I-15 on the east.
I'm sorry, the 50, the 56, uh, the 52 on the south. I'm, I'm, I apologize.
No problem.
So 52 on the south, 15 on the east, 56 corridor, including Rancho Penasquitas and Miramesa. Torrey Highlands as well.
I, I'm going to be very rude and just clarify. Um, Barbara, you've, I think you've dealt with this as much thing when, is it Penasquitos or Peñasquitos?
It's Penyasquitos. It's an N-E officially.
That's what I thought. Okay, good. Just want to be sure. All right. Good, thank you for that. Um, and Commissioners, again, I, I won't ask for explanation right now. I'm asking more for texts of amendments so we can see where we are.
And I'm sorry, Chief Tribune, so just, just to clarify, John, you and I have talked about that area, so you know what, what, what I'm, what, what I'm, what I'm speaking about, right, John? Like the, do I need to clarify that any further?
I believe I have, uh, an understanding.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Pons.
Yeah, so because some of my, because of my motion amendment will, is captured with Commissioner Garcia's, but just in case that doesn't pass. Uh, my simple amendment would be to adjust District Four. To rebalance slash re-proportion. The citizen voting age population. To reduce the variance. Without. Significantly impacting surrounding districts.
Before we leave that, John, is that workable for you?
We can certainly explore. That. Um. Because it does not. Reference geographies. It leaves it a bit. Open-ended. Um, in terms of what shifts we will be making. But I, I think Commissioner Pons understands that as well.
I do. And I'll leave it to you because that's your area of expertise to do the exploration. Thank you.
Okay. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
All, all I wanted to say is that. All of the amendments that have just been offered by Commissioner Rams, uh, by Commissioner Serbin, Diaz and Pons are, um. Exactly what I would want to explore with, uh, map 11. And, um, and the. The bullet points, the one, two, three, four bullet points that Commissioner Inman mentioned are also okay with me. So just wanted to let you know that. That's. All of those amendments work for me. Thank you.
Commissioner, were you about to add something? Okay, Commissioner Russ.
Yeah, the whole, whole reason for that jog to the north. Was to increase population into, uh, what, what we're calling in this map, uh, District Three. And, and now we're talking about. Taking that away, you know, so we can get, uh, uh, get a better balance. Um. Um. So, so that, that, that was mainly the reason for, and also for including these, uh, these, uh, planning districts as well. Was to increase. The, uh, the population so we could decrease the variance. These others, I think, are. Are running counter to that. It appears to me.
And for the sake of efficacy, I'll continue to entertain discussion on any of the amendments. Uh, once that discussion's exhausted, I think we will vote on the amendments in order. And if anyone passes that may, um. Make one of the subsequent ones. Unneeded, uh, we will address it then. Before we leave this, and I, I think this may need to be a motion. Um, there was discussion before about contiguity. And I'm thinking on this map, there may be something that needs to be addressed. Uh, either in the. D4 area of Coronado and the Bay going to D1, um, or perhaps in other areas. I think that. Without, I may be confusing things. Let me, let me ask Marguerite first, because she was part of that discussion. Marguerite, do, do you remember something along that line? We were talking about, um. The bridge.
Yes, thank you. And John, I'll refer back to you. This is a map. Where neither the bridge. Nor the ferries. Run between D4. So to maintain contiguity here. We need to take, uh, 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 some. Uh. Population in downtown in that area, much like the current map. Uh, to maintain the contiguity of, uh, D4 here. Now, John, am I mistaken about that?
John, you're muted or we can't hear you?
And I would be more than willing to add that to my motion. I mean, I didn't realize that. I would have had it be part of my motion. Had I realized that.
Yeah, it, it's a technical fix. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, it is. Um, it will. It, we, I've modeled it out. It will move an additional 16 people. Um, if we go straight down to the ferry landing that goes. To, um. Not the convention center, I think the Broadway Pier, is that right? Um. The D4, that can be done with an extension from D4 down. That will move 16 people. Um, it could be more if you choose to widen that area, but it can be done with as little as 16.
Okay, so let, let's just type it out, um, and I'll ask Commissioner Inman and Commissioner Russ, assuming you're willing to take this as a friendly amendment. As a fifth bullet. Up top.
Yes, I'm willing to take it as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that's fine.
Uh, Commissioner Inman, do you want to just take John's language on it? Or do you want to phrase it?
No, John's, however you want to phrase it, contiguity. Um. Between Coronado and, uh. The, uh, whatever that, uh, coastal district number was, I don't remember.
District Four. Near the ferry landing at Broadway Pier.
Yes. And also, I just want to make that clear, Crest, Hamul, Lakeside, Ramona, those are the planning districts, not the cities.
Okay, shall we add planning district after each word in the bullets?
Yes, please.
Good, good technical fix. Okay, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, then Commissioner Diaz.
And all I wanted to say was that my amendment actually, uh. Makes that point about contiguity moot. Because I was at, I was actually moving. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Diaz.
I, if you're looking for more population, you want to include the other ferry landing, I would. Add that if that's okay to. Be with that bullet point that says address contiguity. Uh, via ferry landing at Broadway Pier and. The convention center. So essentially, you're also looking at some of the, if you need to pull population into District Four. Um. To balance it out. It's currently over, it's about 6,000 people. Over. So, um. You couldn't incorporate a piece of downtown. If, if, if the population permits, I, to get that, to manage that, um. Deviation, if you want to get more people, instead of more than 16 people, you could actually pull from areas down, more areas of downtown. Not Barrio Logan.
Oh. I support that approach, Commissioner Diaz.
Commissioner Inman or John, do you want to try to capture that? Well, first of all, I want to make sure that's unacceptable as a friendly amendment.
Yeah, you could just put a slash. And, uh, convention center.
And John, that will be with the understanding, is that sufficient level of detail that you can? Um. Map into the city. Uh. At a statistically relevant level without a, without crossing into any of the communities of interest we've discussed.
That sounds perfect.
So that's for the record. I'm not, I don't want that typed right now, but that should clarify things. And I do, I do agree with Commissioner Diaz. I think that, um. There's enough population there before you get into the communities of interest we've been discussing. That it could be helpful. It could be helpful, but we'll have to see. All right, so Commissioner Inman, Commissioner Russ, just to confirm, that's a friendly amendment as well. That's all understood and clear.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So without. Just got to check my screen again. Without further comment, what we're going to start doing then is work our way through the four amendments. We'll see which are adopted. We will adjust accordingly and then come back to the main motion. Commissioner Russ, I'm sorry, there are five now?
The original amendment and then the other four possibles. You were thinking of, of, of working on the possibles before you did the original, is that what you think?
Yeah, well, the original, I consider the motion, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, yeah.
So starting with the possible amendment that begins to lead, add North Mountain. From Commissioner, from Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I think. Okay. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that it, it, it doesn't act, it says delete. I, I want to make sure that it's clear to everybody that. The other bullet points are still in. Right, that the other bullet, that the, is that how, maybe I'm the one who's confused, sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. We should, we should clarify that because I want the process clear to everybody. The way I would read the amendment. Is that you would be deleting the words in the first lines of Commissioner Inman's motion. But the rest of the motion would remain intact, meaning the four or five bullet points now. Uh. And then, uh, the language you've added regarding District Four and District Four C VAP would be added to the end of the motion. Okay. Okay. No further questions, no further comments. David, would you please call roll, the vote, uh, vote? For the first possible amendment?
Do we have a second on that amendment?
Ah, I don't think I asked for one. Do we have a second on the amendment proposed by Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
If we don't, can we, this just be a separate motion if we don't get a second here?
If we don't get a second, we technically can't vote on it.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Dustall, did I answer what you were concerned or?
I'm just saying, can this be a separate motion? Like, see, I want to see both of them, in other words. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, it, it, what I'm trying to do is avoid giving flow multiple motions to work from. I, I'd rather, for the sake of efficiency, because of where we are in the process, have one motion on map 10. That represents the commission's direction. And so I'm trying to attach amendments to that. Once we're through this, we will do the same exercise for map 11, uh, for map 10. This is map 11, sorry.
What point of border, Chair Baim? Um. Might my amendment actually function as a substitute amendment? Because if my amendment actually passes. Then how would we go back to Commissioner Inman's amendment?
Commissioner Inman didn't offer an amendment, Commissioner Inman.
I mean, to his motion, I'm sorry. How would we go back to his motion? It would be, it would be amended then?
Yes, it would be as amended. Which is why the bullet points would remain intact. Good, all right. David, would you please call the roll for a vote on the amendment offered by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you. Commissioner Brown is absent. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
I.
Commissioner Chen is absent. Commissioner Hanson?
No.
Commissioner Inman?
No.
Commissioner Serbin?
I.
Commissioner Larson?
No.
Commissioner Diaz?
I.
Commissioner Pons?
Nay.
Chair Baim?
Nay.
Commissioner Dustall?
I.
Co-Vice Chair Caterina?
Nay.
Commissioner Kugli?
I.
Commissioner Russ?
No.
Motion fails with Co-Vice Chair. Motion fails with co-vice chair Garcia, Commissioner Serbin, Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Dustal, Commissioner Krugliak voting aye. All other commissioners who are present voting no. The motion, five ayes and seven noes.
I'll ask staff to keep a good, to keep the language visible, so we have it if we need it. Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Garcia. Very good. We move on to the next amendment, and I very much apologize for not having the motioner's name for the amendments or the seconds. The, to move Senate Isabel reservation to District Three, the motioner was Commissioner Diaz, thank you. And was there a second, is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Serbin, thank you. We've exhausted discussion as far as I'm concerned. So David, please, can we call the roll for a vote on this amendment?
Commissioner Chen is absent. Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Co-vice chair Garcia?
Aye.
Chair Bane?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Co-vice chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Brown's absent. Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Dustal?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
So staff all has to add that as a sixth bullet. We move on to the possible amendment that begins move from District Three to District Two. I believe that was moved by Commissioner Serbin, correct? Correct. And do we have a second for that? Co-vice chair Garcia, thank you. Again, I considering discussion exhausted on that. Commissioner Inman?
Well, so as it reads, I understand the motion. But I don't understand what happens if this results in a map whose deviation increases significantly. So I guess that that is my question. It doesn't say where you're going to get population to offset the move, if you will.
Because of the nature, because of the nature of discussion, I will allow Commissioner Serbin to respond to that.
I'm happy to allow the commission to discuss that as a whole. However, I would, what I would suggest is that this motion and and this map, I guess this motion is really putting to the, to the, to the center what we're, what we're being asked with, with between the two maps, which is, what do we do with the, with Central San Diego and with Imperial Beach and 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 that, and Chula Vista? Because either, you know, if 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 we, as I feel strongly about Central San Diego and not, and 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 if we want to if we, if Central San Diego is not unified or remains with East County, then it looks to me like Imperial Beach and Chula Vista have to have a separate district. So if what, if Commissioner Inman, if what you're asking is, what would I suggest in order to make up for the population that 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 this district would lose by moving the, the center of San Diego to the other district, then I would suggest that we move Imperial Beach and Chula Vista into this district to make up for that population.
Is that, I mean.
Otherwise, I, although I would also entertain other, other suggestions by commissioners as well.
Because I would ask Flo or John, do you have an opinion about this? I mean, the demographer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll call you in, co-vice chair Garcia. But, John, please.
I mean, we are happy to for the, that, you know, at at the direction of the commission. We.
I mean, I like, I like the move. I mean, I'm not opposed to the move. I just want to make sure we have direction for Flo and what to do, because there's a lot of people that live here.
Okay, let me, let me interrupt for just a second and partly to give John time to think about. Let me call on co-vice chair Garcia and then Commissioners Inman and Russ, I may ask you if you can accept a friendly amendment on this as a variation. In other words, there would actually be two maps produced under this motion, one with this having a best attempt by Flo and one without. But co-vice chair Garcia was very patient. Let me call on her first, then Commissioner Hanson, then I'll come back. Co-vice chair Garcia.
Yeah, so my possible, my amendment actually was trying to deal with this. I didn't go into very much detail, but one of the things I suggested was that we take population from D four and add it to to D one. And we could go all the way west and then, and then, and north a little bit. And we could possibly also take population from D four and at, in the the, the, the D four section that's in the north, northwestern portion of D two and add it to D two. So I don't know if there's enough population there in those two areas to make up what we would be adding in the central San Diego area that Commissioner Serbin is talking about. But that's, that's where I was coming from. I I also to the extent that we can without upsetting, without, without creating a map with too high of a deviation. That's where I would look for ways to balance the population in the different districts.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I just want to clarify, because when Mr. Serbin, when you were talking about describing the district, I thought you wanted to join Del Mar, Rancho Panamaskitos with the coastal district. And that's the pink part, not the green part, which is central. Am I wrong?
You're, you're, you're correct, Commissioner Hanson. So the, the central portion that's now currently green or yellow, I'm interested in turning that pink.
Pink, okay, so the, the statement on, in your in your amendment says from three to two, and what you meant was from three to four.
Oh, is that what that, I'm so sorry. Yes, that's that.
Yeah, the numbers are confusing.
I'm sorry, I don't tell colors apart very well.
Oh, well, I don't tell the numbers apart. They go, they keep changing on me. So I'm looking at pink and yellow.
I, I believe that's completely correct. And Commissioner Serbin, just to confirm, you were talking about moving it west.
Yes, correct. I apologize for.
On south, okay.
Commissioner Hanson, you were that teacher. I always corrected me, and then I loved it that you corrected me down the road. So thank you for that. Commissioner Dustal?
Um, I wanted to suggest along the lines, I think you were suggesting chair about making this a variation, because I think it's going to change the population so much. That's too much, too many other things are going to have to change, but I'd like to see the map as it is. You know what I mean? Currently, I'd suggest a variation.
And I have that in mind also for the following amendment, because I think we may run into a similar issue there. So let me ask Commissioners Inman and Russ, would you be willing to accept that as a friendly amendment with something like also develop a variation of the map that, and then just include the language from the amendment? So Flo would be tasked with producing a map without any of this language and would produce another map with its best attempt to meet these conditions.
Yeah, I'd accept that.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Serbin, did you want to add something?
You're muted.
Sorry, sorry, I'm muted. I just realized I was muted. So I have a further, another suggestion that might be entertained, which is the area of Rancho Santa Fe. John, you, the, John, we, we had this conversation about the Harmony Grove, Rancho Santa Fe, this area to the west of, of the lake. And if that, the portion of that area that's now in District Four, that might, that might also move to District Three to offset some of this population that we're moving.
Let me offer, and I'm glad we're making these statements for the record, but in the interest of time, it is certainly within bounds for commissioners to add any ideas. Now that this variation is going to be part of the motion, send those to staff. Staff will send them on to Flo as food for thought. If Flo can incorporate them, I'm sure they will. If they can't, I'm sure Flo will be able to explain why they couldn't. But that goes for all commissioners. I want to actually go back and look at several of the old maps and see if there may be some population centers or figures that we could use from those discussions. But I, I don't think we have to do it tonight, although I know Flo would appreciate as much specificity as possible. John, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that, that's fine. Yeah.
And obviously, we, we won't allow a lot of time for that either. Commissioners, I'll ask you to be as quick as you can on that, but certainly no later than Tuesday morning. If you have thoughts on this or any other maps where you want ideas within the motions considered as flow exercises and flexibility. So staff, if we can move that part, that amendment in yellow up as another, right, just like that. Thank you. And because it's a friendly amendment, we don't have to have a vote on it. Now, we do have the remaining amendment to deal with. Commissioners Inman and, well, I'm sorry, first of all, this was moved by Commissioner Pons? Correct. Do we have a second on this motion?
Second.
Commissioner Dustal, thank you. Um Commissioner Pons, I'm wondering if the motion, the variation that was just done covers at least a good bit of this motion. In other words, because of what they're going to, Flo has to do in the variation of working on District Four and what that's going to do, is there almost by implication, or do we need something explicit like this?
It does not. I want some, something explicitly need to be identified addressing the citizen voting age populations in the districts. So everything above this doesn't meet the cut line. So.
I just want to check. Commissioner Dustal? Same thing. Good. All right. Um, again, I consider discussion exhausted on this, but since we've had a friendly amendment added, I want to just make sure there are no comments. Seeing none. David, would you please call the roll for a vote on this amendment offered by Commissioner Pons, seconded by Commissioner Dustal?
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown is absent. Commissioner Serbin?
Aye, good luck with it, John.
Commissioner Dustal?
Aye.
Co-vice chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Yes, I, I don't need John to have luck. I just need John to have skill.
Commissioner Chen is absent. Co-vice chair Katerina, Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Chair Bane?
Aye, with the understanding that I think John needs something considerably stronger than luck or skill, and I'll buy one for you. Go ahead.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Law commissioners who are present voting aye.
David, thank you very much. So that becomes part of the motion as well. Thank you, staff. And commissioners, I appreciate your patience. As we do this, we're going to have a vote on the motion. But frankly, this is the kind of specificity and process I was hoping we would have. Because it is addressing the full range of the issues and capturing the seriousness with them. And Commissioners Pons and Dustal, I hope you didn't take offense at my comment. I'm wanted to make sure we were bringing that out explicitly so that it's clearly understood in the record.
None taken.
Good. Okay, so as we are about to vote on the motion, give commissioners one moment to examine it. This is again, is the motion offered by Commissioner Inman, seconded by Commissioner Russ and amended as seen on the screen. David, would you please call roll, the roll for a vote on this motion?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Dustal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen is absent. Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Chair Bane?
Aye.
Co-vice chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Co-vice chair Garcia? Commissioner Brown is absent. Commissioner Serbin?
So can I just clarify? All the, all of these bullets are going to apply to the variation too, right?
Yes, um, the only difference between the first map and the variation map is that next to last bullet.
Yeah, which is, okay, which is about the variation app. Okay, thank you. I, I then.
Chair Bane, the motion passes unanimously. Law commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you very much, commissioners. All right. We move on to map ten. So if there's a moment here. Now, I want to be very careful with what we task here, although I welcome open discussion. But we have a fairly specific set of instructions for one map. What I'd like to do is use map ten for a motion that would be more easily covered by the way it's drawn or address some issues that we weren't able to address due to the nature of map eleven. Do I have a motion concerning map ten? Commissioner Serbin? Commissioner Serbin's hand is down. Commissioner Diaz?
No, 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 wait. Oh, sorry. I was on, I was on mute. My bad.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you for recognizing me, Chair Bane. I appreciate, appreciate it. I'm very much in favor of map ten as I think that we received a bunch of public comment on it this morning and, and it's an evolution that, that takes into account a lot of public comment throughout this whole process. So in the public comment that we've heard so far, I didn't hear very many, if at all, any this suggestions to change much of it. So I'd like to proceed with the map as it is.
So the motion would be to
Proceed with draft map ten as presented.
Presented, perhaps with something like with flow analytic, with flow to provide additional detail required for a final map?
Sure. And, you know, and, and because I wasn't able to just finish, you know, say, say the things I liked about this map, I'd appreciate if you'd indulge me in just a minute. So I like that this.
I'd like to take a second first.
Good, good.
Partly so I don't forget to take it again. Do we have a second on this map, on the motion, brother? Sorry. Commissioner Diaz, thank you. All right, Commissioner Serbin to continue, then Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Pons. Commissioner Serbin, please.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chair Bane. And just, just, just so that the, the public and, and the commission knows the basis for the motion, why I support this map so strongly. I like this map because it unifies the seventy-eight corridor district of the five north county cities. And, you know, and let me, let me list the, the significant public comment that this map responds to. So one, it unifies the seventy-eight corridor district of the five north county cities. As we all know, that's Carlsbad, Oceanside, San Marcos, Escondido, and Vista. It also creates a district unifying the communities in Alcohona, La Mesa, and Lemon Grove, which, which several groups have asked for. It also creates a border district from Imperial Beach to Imperial County, which we've also received a ton of public comment about. Further, it preserves the north county rural community identity by unifying Fallbrook, Boncel, Ramona, Julian, Alpine, Mount Laguna. And it also further presents, preserves that identity by responding to numerous letters from the Backcountry Coalition that identified the communities of Ramona, Poway, Lakeside, Alpine, Fallbrook, Valley Center, and Borrego Springs as a common community. Earlier, the, again, there were mentioned, it was mentioned. Earlier, the, uh, again, there were mentioned, it was mentioned that Oceanside, Vista and Carlsbad should be kept together because of tri-city health. And also there were just a number, we've received a, a number of. Groups in support of this. I mean, just today, uh, there were county workers, vets, the LGBTQ center and a number of other groups. And so just, I feel very strongly about it because we, we received a ton of public comment and supported this map as it is. So. And, and, and also because it responds to many, many of the themes that we've received throughout this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes, just to be consistent with continuity, wanted to add a, actually. I support everything hundred percent that Commissioner Servant has just said about why I support. It's also a reason why I support map 10, but wanted to add that detail about the ferries. As part of an amendment, a friendly amendment, as consistent with the previous motion.
Commissioner Serbin, I'm, I'm.
Absolutely. We can just put it into the original.
Yeah. So while staff works on that, I have Commissioner Inman, then Commissioner Russ.
Yes, I would like to. Hopefully this is simply a friendly amendment, but if you look at the table. As it stands, this map does split several community planning areas in the, the rural. East County. And so I would request that flow. Take into account the community planning areas as well and drawing the boundaries where possible.
Thank you for reminding me about that, Commissioner Inman. I would absolutely incorporate that into the, into the main body of the motion.
That's all.
Diaz, you'd agree? Very good. Commissioner Inman, I, I just want to see, can we be a little more specific about which. Planning areas we're talking about?
It's, if you look at the PDF document, community planning areas that are split are Alpine, Bonzo. County Islands, you can't put those together. They're, they're all separate. Crest, Descanso. Hidden Meadows, I'm not sure about that one. Lakeside, Mountain Empire, North County Metro. I mean, I would just say refer to the table. It's might be easier than typing them all out.
Good. So we'll be adding that. Good. And commissioners, we may. Have some technical adjustment to this as we investigate some of the planning groups, but I'll consider those technical. Thank you for that. So that's included. Commissioner Russ?
I thought while we were talking about what we liked and what we didn't like about, about the, the map. And actually, I, I'll probably save that for the next time. Because there's, there's a number of things I, I don't care for the map, particularly having the southeast corner of the county. Married with the southwest. Corner of the county. We heard quite a bit of discussion about how they are very, very different. They have different problems and things like that. But I suppose I, I don't have an amendment or friendly amendment or unfriendly amendment. I'll just discuss that next time when we discuss this amended. Map. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to turn to Marguerite and then John in just a moment to ask for any summary comments they have on the motion, but I think we're very close. Uh, I do want to say for the record that. I'm, I share Commissioner Russ's discomfort. Again, especially as someone who spent a good deal of time along that southern area. However, any amendment I would offer is probably already covered. By map 11, and therefore I don't think there's a need to adjust that and change that. I am still a little uncertain on this map. About what things mean for the areas just east of El Cajon. And that same unincorporated discussion we had earlier. As well as. What some of the shifts may mean. Uh, in the center along the lines of what Commissioner Pons offered in the previous motion. Now, all those are just complexities and things I have in my notes. Um, I'm not going to ask myself for a motion on that, but I would offer. A suggestion for commissioners to keep all those things in mind. Um, it's probably a good idea to keep in mind. What we're talking about with regard to both maps, what may be attached to full consideration under map 11. But under map, uh, could also come up in discussion of map 10. Commissioner Pons? You're muted?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, please.
Please go ahead.
Okay, and that is that we. Adjust District Two to rebalance, re proportion the citizen voting age population, reduce the variance without significantly impacting surrounding districts.
Sorry, that's with regard to District Two?
Yes, sir.
And is that something that can be copied from the previous motion?
Yes, to, to substitute District Two with District Four and you have it.
I'll ask Commissioner Serbin and.
Can I just ask John a question about that? Like, i- is it possible to, to, to reduce the C VAP variance without impacting surrounding districts?
I don't know. I mean, it's unlikely. It's going to impact the district, but the degree to which it impacts them is. Is unknown until we try.
Okay, I guess what I mean to say is like, if we're going to. Effect the C VAP number in, in a non-negligible way, then. I guess it, I don't think we can not significantly impact surrounding districts, right?
I, I, I think that's accurate. I just hesitate to say anything definitively until we've done it. But I think it, it certainly is challenging because. The C VAP number to balance that requires, it's, it's overall. Lower than total population. And so as a result, it requires more movement of the map to make these adjustments. So. You know, like I said, I don't like to say anything definitively without having to explore without having actually done it. But I do think that is, that's a challenge for sure.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the, of the amendment in principle. I just, I'm just curious as to whether it's, whether it's something that can actually happen. But I, I appreciate you looking into it. And I imagine you'll report back to us. Thanks, John.
So Commissioner Serbin, as far as you're concerned, this can be accepted as a friendly amendment?
Uh, I guess you'd have to ask Commissioner Diaz as well, since she's a second.
I am about to.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Commissioner Diaz?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Marguerite, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. I do want to remind the commissioners. About the advice you received from our racially polarized voting and voting rights experts. That setting primary focus on racial balancing. Will present risks to your plan. I think you are fully entitled to look at that. But it has to be a secondary concern to your other considerations. Including communities of interest, et cetera. It cannot be your primary approach. And I just want to remind you of that and I'm anticipating. That the mo- motion is made in light of the legal briefing that you've received. And that it would be a consideration that the commission wants to see and wants explored. But is a secondary consideration to the community testimony you've received.
For me? I appreciate that, counsel. There was no mention of any arbitrary numbers or thresholds. Uh, and when you look at Mr. Adelson's executive summary, as well as the RPV report. It talks about how can you create demographics that can avoid voting blocks? That can ensure coalitions have an influence as well as an impact on representatives to. Represent their area, their population, their demographic. So the intent is secondary. It is not primary. It has always been intended to do so. And that's why I think it follows the guidelines presented by Mr. Adelson as well as Dr. Gross. Thank you.
And you know, Commissioner Pons, with that explanation, I agree with you. Because the focus is on coalitions of communities and communities of interest. And that's well within the authority and the discretion of the commission. So thank you for the clarification.
You are so welcome, man.
Commissioner Serbin?
Can't unmute. Oh, there we go. Is it necessary to add that wording into the motion, Marguerite? I mean, like as a secondary consideration, comma, adjust District Two to rebalance?
Um, I think it would be a good addition.
Why not, right?
I mean, we have the conversation and it's understood, and I think it would be a good addition.
I, I would, I would accept that amendment if, if, if you'd like to propose it, Commissioner Pons?
I do. Yes.
Okay.
Is there some wording there?
So, right, so the, the beginning of that bullet should read as a secondary consideration, comma. Thank you.
I'm going to ask for a pause here and I'll ask staff to bring up the previous motion as approved. And commissioners, even though we've just voted on this, you'll note the last bullet. I will take it as understood. And I'll seek the confirmation of the two original motioners and then ask for no objection. That the same secondary consideration language applies, even though it's not written in here. In other words, I had understood all of this to be based on the communities of interest. Mr. Adelson's report, Dr. Gross's report and all our previous discussions. Commissioners, do I understand that correctly for that?
I'm sorry. Let me go back to what was changed in District 10. It wasn't my intent to add the words as a secondary consideration. And I saw it was added. You know, it's. I think it's necessary, it's essential. It goes back to some of the other elements of this discussion. Um, and so I don't think it's necessary to add the words as a secondary consideration. Similar to discussions about community planned areas and other things. So I'm just concerned that. It's part of the discussion that should remain front and center. And I like for it to do so. I think adding those words. As a secondary consideration sort of waters down the discussion and it sort of minimizes its importance.
Okay. While still being fully consistent with. The conversation you just had with Marguerite.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. So let's, let's leave that motion alone because I'd very much rather not reopen it. On the previous, on the motion from Commissioner Serbin, though. Marguerite? I really had interpreted the discussion as a clarification. And the wording as a secondary consideration as. Something that wasn't necess- wasn't absolutely necessary, but was really up to the motioners to make. From a strictly legal point of view, though, I am a little uncomfortable having the language in one motion, but not the other. It, it's easier for me to say. At, at, just from a process point of view. The same background applies that you and Commissioner Pons were discussing.
Yes.
Should we have that, those words in one motion and not the other?
No, I recommend that they be taken out of both.
Okay.
But then our discussion have clarified that this is consistent with legal advice. Provided by your VRA expert. And that, and let the record reflect that. As the intent of this amendment.
Very good. So we, we will have the amendment, but without the words as a secondary consideration from your point of view?
Yes.
Good. Commissioner Serving, Commissioner Diaz, is that okay?
Certainly.
Great. Good. All right. Thank you for that. Sorry to take people's time. With that, any further discussion, comments, amendments? Very good, David. I'll ask you to call roll, call the roll for a vote on the motion offered by Commissioner Servin, seconded by Commissioner Diaz, as shown on the screen.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I.
Chair Bame?
I.
Commissioner Diaz?
I.
Commissioner Russ?
I.
Commissioner Dostal?
No.
Commissioner Krugliak?
I.
Commissioner Inman?
I.
Commissioner Pons?
I.
Commissioner Larson?
I.
Commissioner Chen is absent. Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
I.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Brown is absent. Commissioner Serbin?
I.
Motion passes with Commissioners Dostal and Garcia voting no. All other commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Just to confirm. I see no other possible motions on the floor. And I'm going to move towards adjournment unless commissioners have any further motions or points they wish to make. Seeing none. Thank you very much, commissions, for the thinking, for the efforts to move forward and for the approval of all three motions. Again, if you have any further thoughts on the implementation or what flow needs to do on this, please send your comments to staff. So they can be properly recorded and tracked. Staff will move them on through the SPOC Commissioner Inman to flow. And I'll note for the record that the maps resulting from today's motion will be prepared by flow and posted online by November 23rd. That's in keeping with the deadline we have for the. Uh, public hearing that happens on December 2nd alongside our special meeting that day. The meeting that day will begin at 3:00 PM. Where we plan to hear additional input such as ability to elect analyses from Dr. Gross. Legal assessments by Special Voting Rights Act Counsel, Mr. Adelson. And any other relevant inputs we need to consider. That meeting begins at 3:00 PM. We will have, though, a time certain of 5:00 PM to start the IRC second and final draft map public hearing again on December 2nd. That will include again live scenario modeling, although as Ben said, we'll have some ideas underway to improve the process. And again, thank you for your patience on that. That, though, will be a little different because it will be focused on final refinements to the district boundary lines that will be reviewed in more detail. And especially include making sure we've dealt with all the details of the edges of the lines, which can be a fairly complex and detailed process. With that in mind, as well as the likelihood that we'll have additional agenda items, and I will hope. Number of public comments. The December 2nd meeting will likely be continued to an all virtual session the next day, Friday, December 3rd at 2:00 PM. That will probably be where we do more of the live modeling and final mapping activities. I want to remind the public. That we still very much welcome and want to hear any e-commerce. Electronic mailings or email, letters, maps or other input. But the deadline for public submission of maps and community of interest input. Via the Community Builder Tool and the District Scenario Modeler Tool is December 2nd. In keeping with the approved IRC timeline, please ensure any feedback you have using those tools is completed as early as possible before that timeline. Because as you saw tonight, the earlier we have it, the more we can consider it, even if we're not having a meeting. So. We move to adjournment. That concludes the business before the independent redistricting commission tonight. As I mentioned, our next meeting will be a special meeting on Thursday, December 2nd at 3:00 PM. With a draft map public hearing to begin at a time certain of 5:00 PM. Both meetings will be held at the County Office of Education Building. Located in Linda Vista, specifically 6401 Linda Vista Road in room 401402. The zip code is 92111, but we will again have virtual participation via Zoom. And we have the possibility of continuing to an all virtual session for mapping activities starting at 2:00 PM the following day, Friday, December 3rd. With that, and with great thanks to commissioners and the public for all the comments we received, and a reminder that more details, our current draft maps, our past draft maps, meeting links, and a host of other background material remain available on our website, www.drawyourcommunity.com. And my own thanks for attending and putting up with today's proceedings. This meeting is adjourned at six forty-one PM. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Arv. Good point.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
It's good seeing you, Barb. Good seeing you too, Arv. And you too, Chair.